On my clock here, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the order. This meeting of the November nineteenth, twenty twenty, City National Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Johnsons? Mike Peterson?
President.
Scott Leclerc?
Here.
Oh, and can you please tell me too if you are alone in the room?
Yeah, hello.
Hello.
Thank you. Adam Barley?
Here and alone.
Ed Weber?
Here, alone.
Alderman David Tensa? Alderwoman Jan Schmidt?
I'm here and alone.
Dan Hudson? Maggie Harper?
Here and alone.
Bob Ballinger?
Here and alone.
Larry Hirsch?
Here and alone.
All right, and we have a forum.
Okay. So I will go ahead and read the introductory statement. So I'm Scott Leclerc, the Chair of the City National Planning Board. This is, again, is the nineteenth of November, twenty twenty, City National Planning Board meeting. As Chair of the Planning Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by Governor Sununu, as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order, number twelve pursuant to Executive Order twenty twenty dash zero four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. In accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that, one, we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. Specifically, we're video conferencing utilizing Zoom. Public access to this meeting is provided via Zoom, and the link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. This meeting may also be streamed to the city's website, www.nashvillenh.gov/ three one eight, run slash CTV, on Nashville's community link, and may also be viewed on Comcast Channel sixteen. Number two, we are providing public notice and necessary information for accessing the meeting. If anyone has any problems accessing the meeting, please call six zero three five eight nine three one one five. They will help you connect. Lastly, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods above or that I've mentioned, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. May control this meeting and, to the extent practical and advisable, board will follow the procedures as identified in our bylaws. The applicant will present the applicant's case, followed by questions by the board. We'll offer a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition before the board deliberates and determines an outcome. Applicants and their representatives and individuals required to appear before the board are appearing remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the board may have contacted the planning department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if they're unable to use Zoom. Please note that all the votes taken at this meeting will be done by a roll call vote. The planning board will continue to hold meetings electronically until it's been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The board, the planning department, the city staff, thank everybody for their understanding and patience. Okay. Moving on, approval of the minutes. So we have in our packet the minutes from November fifth, twenty twenty. Has anybody had a chance on the board to take a look at these minutes or make a motion as to whether they're acceptable as written or want any amendments?
I move that they're acceptable as written.
Sort of a motion by Mr. Hirsch to approve as written. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion on that item? Can we get a roll vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alderwoman Jan Schmidt?
I'll need to abstain.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Abstain. I did not receive my packet this week, so I did not have access to the minutes.
And Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Okay. Moving on, communications. Did you have any?
We do not have any to see, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Reported Chairman, Committee, and Liaison. Anything to report, Ed?
Nothing to, nothing happened, no HDC, and.
Okay. All right, so moving through the agenda, continuing on, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plans, there are none. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plans, there are none. New business site plan, the application number one, that was seventy-five Deerwood Drive, that's been requested to be postponed by the applicant to December third.
Right.
Right? Okay, so we will take that up. Moving on, other business review of tentative agenda to determine if proposals of regional impact. So we have some notes from the technical review meeting on November second in our packet. Anybody had a chance to take a look at those and want to make a motion as to whether there's any items of proposal, proposed items of regional impact on there?
Weber?
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Yes, I read that, and there is nothing here that shows any regional impact.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Weber, no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do you have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? All right, we'll take a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Abstain.
And Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passed.
Moving on with the agenda, next up for other businesses is item number two, referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed R dash twenty dash zero ninety. This is authorizing the purchase of land and buildings at fifty-five Franklin Street. So we have someone from, that wants to speak on this item?
So Chair, I believe Dan Donovan has just joined the call. I might want to give him a minute just to jump on, get acclimated. Dan, are you with us?
I see video but no audio, Dan. At least in the list.
Mr. Chair, let's give Dan a second to acclimate. Perhaps we can move the other item first?
Sure. Yeah, we can move, move, come back to item number one. Let's go to item number, or excuse me, item number two. We'll go to item number three, which is another referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed R twenty dash zero nine four. This is the omnibus resolution regarding new market tax credit transaction for the Performing Arts Center. I think I saw. Tim, are you keeping on this?
I am, I'm here. Yep.
Okay, I'm at it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and for the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. And thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to this distinguished body for having me here this evening to talk about something that I know we have discussed many times in the past, which is the Performing Arts Center, the future site being at what we refer to as two oh one Main Street. The legislation before you is, has not changed as to what we've talked about in the past, where the City of Nashville endeavors to leverage new market tax credits to help finance the project. And due to IRS requirements, US Treasury requirements, we need to structure the deal in a certain way. The City of Nashville cannot be the owner of the project. So the legislation before you essentially, you know, effectuates that, but we still will be the master tenant. If you, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna just quickly share my screen. I think it would help the conversation.
Yep.
And I don't necessarily want to get into the weeds of this, because I know we've all kind of heard this many times, and we will be going into this conversation at length at the Board of Aldermen meeting on Tuesday night. But we need to, for the purposes of new market tax credit, basically transfer the land and the building from ownership of the City of Nashville, which it is now, into a new legal entity, a special purpose legal entity that we're creating to basically hold the asset, which is this entity down here, the Qualic B. So as you can see up in my left-hand corner, hopefully everyone can see my arrow, we have the City of Nashville up here, essentially two oh one Main Streets up here, the building and land itself. Contemporaneously with everything that happens to effectuate this transaction, the building would be transferred into the ownership of the Qualic B. And then, as you can see over here, there's a master tenancy lease agreement that would be on the other side of it, that would, that basically allows the City of Nashville to still have care, custody, and control. But it satisfies the IRS requirements and the US Treasury CDFI requirements for new market tax credits. What you're seeing before you is a standard new market tax credit deal diagram. This is, you know, how most deals are done, and this is, so this is not new. And just something that we're gonna need to do to comply with the various program and leverage the, the, what will be about two point four million dollars to be added into the project for the total project cost of twenty-five million. At any rate, that's just a very level, very high-level overview of essentially the way the deal is gonna flow. But nothing has changed materially since the last time we've talked. Seven hundred and fifty-seat venue, multipurpose, flexible space, private operator. Designed already, hundred percent design, and we're looking to start construction once we have the financing complete, hopefully just right after the first of the year. I'll leave my comments there, and hopefully I can get a positive recommendation so we can keep this project on track. Thank you.
Okay. So anybody have any questions, Mr. Barley?
Yeah, I just, Tim, I was wondering if you could just clarify. I know that this, you know, the ordinance here goes through some of the history, including the fact that there was originally this requirement that there had to be four million in private fundraising before the city would go out and bond it, and then that requirement got changed. And I know, seeing here that the new market tax credit funding is about two point four million, does that mean that the other one point six has, was successfully raised?
If I may, Mr. Chair, that requirement that you're referencing, the four million dollars, is still required. That, the only thing that changed was the timeline that allowed for additional time for the fundraising. The requirement of having an additional quote-unquote four million of non-city money is still part of the deal. And yes, to answer your question, the one point six, or I think it's technically one five five three, has to be there. If you want, I can put the, I'm just gonna quickly put my screen back up, because I think it'll help explain the deal to Adam. So Adam, right here, as you can see, is the one five five three, what my arrow is going. It goes into the Qualic B, and then down here, if you can see, the two four four six, that adds up to the four million, that is what allows us to unlock the proceeds of the bond to actually do the project for the, for the twenty-one million, of the total twenty-five million dollar project.
Got it. No, thank you. And do you know, I mean, approximately where we are in terms of, you know, raising the one point five five, or what it is, you know, is, are we, you have a sense of the, sort of the progress there?
So the last update I got, I believe they are, either have it all raised in either cash or pledges, or they're pretty close, close enough that they have confidence, because we have a closing date set for December fifteenth with, for our new markets transaction. We need to have that one five five three in cash for that project to be able to do it. So if they don't have it on hand right now, they will have it by, by December fifteenth.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
Weber?
Mr. Weber?
Um, not to further approval or anything, is there, do you already have a contractor for this? I think you were talking about it, Tim.
We do have a contractor for this project. We have a guaranteed maximum price. And it's Harvey Construction.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, anyone? Okay. If not, so the, the board's role here would be to make a recommendation, essentially either favorable or unfavorable for this resolution. Does anybody want to make them or start a motion on this? Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. Obviously, as you, Mr. Cummings said, we've, we've been through various phases of this project. Well, I continue to think it's an excellent project for the city and look forward to, you know, seeing you, that we've got, we're nearly at the point where, you know, the funding is there to actually get started. So I will happily make a motion for a favorable recommendation on R dash twenty dash zero nine four.
Okay, so we have that motion for, to provide a favorable recommendation for this item. Do we have a second on it?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on it?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Jan Schmidt?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Abstain.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Okay, thanks a lot. All right, I think, seeing Mr. Donovan on there, looks like he's on mute, but I'll go ahead and bring back up our other item on other business, that being the resolution R dash twenty dash zero ninety, authorizing the purchase of land and buildings at fifty-five Franklin Street. So do we have somebody who wants to talk on that?
Uh, excuse me, yes, everyone. This is Dan Donovan from the School Department. I'll give you a quick summary of this purchase. Back pre-COVID, in the early winter, the school district, due to a lack of, we had run out of classrooms at our elementary schools to be used for preschool. The preschool programs have been growing. Preschool is ages three and four, and these are students that have a, an IEP, so the Special Education Students, and were required by law to educate them. So since we were running out of space, we started looking around to say, would there be any appropriate spaces in the city that maybe we could put some of our, maybe, bring our preschool program together? So working with Mr. Cummings, we viewed a number of buildings in the city. We had previously, a few years ago, when we were looking to move the Brentwood program from Merrimack to Nashville, we did the same thing. We came to realize fairly quickly that there's very few buildings that would suit a school. A few landlords aren't necessarily thrilled with having school children there. So it's somewhat limited. There are other landlords willing to do it, but the cost to build out the space would be significant, and most of them would be rentals as opposed to purchases. basically, we decided to, when we viewed everything, we looked at fifty-five Franco Street, which is the former Nashville Corp. RD Building. So it had also, for the last fifteen years or so, been the location for the Nashville Christian Academy. So a school had in fact been in there. And the two main reasons to do it, like I said earlier, was to give us more, more space for our preschools and, and in a sense, to centralize those. We feel if we centralized them, we can get better bang for the buck with our OTPT and various other programs that we run for these students. Having a consolidation, bringing everything together, would probably reduce in fewer people having to work in the program, and there could be fewer full-time people as opposed to numerous part-time people. The other thing that, that came up during this is, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a rental of what our out-of-district program, we call it the Brentwood Program. That is currently in a leased facility out on Amherst Street. This is the third year of a three-year lease. The cost of that is about, was for last year, with all the CAM costs involved, was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So there was also the thought that maybe we could bring both of these programs together into the same building. So we worked with the Special Education Department. This Franklin Street facility is four levels. The plan is to put the Brentwood Program, which is a, a high school level, children, most of them, they would be on the fourth floor, and the second and the third floor would be the preschool program. We would keep the first floor, which is really more of a, it's more of a half a basement floor. We'd keep that open for now and use it for future growth. it was also, the way this year worked out, it's, it's, it's a unique funding opportunity, is the way I describe it. The building was, was for sale for two million dollars. I spoke, the owner is the Grace Fellowship Church. I spoke with them, we negotiated. They were willing to do a installment plan, an installment purchase, which many people aren't, and this made it much more easy for us to do. So they agreed to a four-year installment plan where we would pay six hundred thousand upon signing. That would be year one. Of that six hundred thousand, four hundred and thirty thousand of it is coming from a grant. It's a federal grant that we've already been approved to use towards the purchase of this facility. The remainder of the funds for this year will come from savings already incurred by not having to use the buses early in the year. As you know, we didn't, we haven't been in school very long, and it's only been a limited number of students, but we saved at least that hundred and seventy thousand dollar delta in the first five weeks. So the funds are basically there, the six hundred thousand for year one. Years two and three, the pet plan is for payments of two hundred and fifty thousand per year. Basically, a hundred and seventy-five of that's already in the budget, because that's the Brentwood Program, so we wouldn't be paying rent anymore. Those funds would be transferred over. So I would just have to come up with seventy-five thousand per year in years two and year three in the operating budget. And I believe I can do that without having to increase the operating budget by that seventy-five thousand. Which leads us to year four. Year four, the final payment would be seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. We would, once again, get the two hundred and fifty thousand from the operating budget with the remainder. If we could not come up with it over the next three years with maybe some excess funds in the operating budget, you can't guarantee that. If we couldn't, then the plan would be to request the remainder of those funds from the Middle School Project Reserve. Currently, the Middle School Project, which is a hundred and twenty million dollar project for all three schools, has, has a reserve of over seven million dollars. We're well on our way to completing the Fairgrounds middle piece, and we'll be starting in the spring, Penechuk. And then we'll be starting in the spring also of the new school. But based on speaking with plant operations and the other people on the JS SBC, we feel that we'd be able to do that if we can come up with it in the next three years through other operating budget savings. That'll be the number one priority to do, but if we can't do that, that would be the backup plan. The, the other reason for doing this now is we would be able to do a lot of the work we need to do before the students can move in, and we'd be able to do that within our staff, so that we'd be able to move in in September of, of next year, two thousand twenty-one. There'd be significant savings using our plant operations staff rather than hiring contractors. We have had an architect come in and review the building, and there's about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand worth of costs, which we already have in the budget. There were some one-time funds that came down from the state this year. It was a total of two point two million, which was given to the school district, and we have three, I mean, three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand, and that was assigned to this Franklin building, assuming we went through with it. So the purchase and sales agreement was prepared, working with Attorney Celia Leonard from the city. And, and the church was, was very gracious to work with when it came to, they agreed not to charge any interest on this installment plan. So that's a fairly significant savings to us, too. So that is a quick summary of what our plan is. It has been approved by the Board of Education and was also approved Tuesday night by the PEDC, I believe is the name of the committee.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Donovan, or?
That is it. Any questions?
All right, I'll check. Mr. Weber?
Yes. Question. Has the building inspector or the fire marshal reviewed your tentative plans?
The fire marshal was in the building, I think, about a week ago, so, yes. And has the inspector, I believe he was there that day, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'd have to double-check on that, because I was not there that day. Mr. Smith, the Plant Operations Director, was over there with them.
Okay, the reason I say this, sometime back when I was in construction, I supervised a daycare center, and that was in Massachusetts. But still, the same kind of, usually it's the same kind of codes are enforced. And any daycare or preschool students of that age were not allowed to be above the first floor, and they had to have direct access to the exit, which was right away. And they couldn't have stairs and everything like that. It had to be a direct ride out. So that's, that's why I brought that up. If these are children of needs that have to have help to get out or anything, that's a real concern. And it should be, before purchasing, that, that really does need to be made sure that the building codes or the national building codes are, that it's compliant.
I, I believe we're done at, but I can't promise, so I will verify that tomorrow or soon.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Donovan?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I actually found the resolution online, and I just wanted to, to bring to Mr. Donovan's intention. It looks like under the purchase price, section two of the proposed purchase and sale agreement, I think there's a typo. Installment number four says paid honor before September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. It looks like this was ink-signed November fourth, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. If this does go before the Board of Aldermen. If this does go before the Board of Aldermen, someone may want to review that and make sure the years are correct in the installment plan.
Yes, you're correct, Mr. Ballinger, that is an error in the purchase and sales as that was presented and as you, as you see it. So, I'm aware of that, I've mentioned it, I mentioned it Tuesday night, and we'll make sure that that date is corrected.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, follow-up question?
Go ahead.
Just with regard to the entire public school district in Nashua, is there any reasonable expectation as to when this building will actually be occupied? There's obviously been a great deal of discussion with the Board of Education and other entities. I, I, I just, we, we, the city has recently purchased land for a new middle school. There's extensive capital improvements planned for both Fairgrounds Middle as well as Penachuck Middle, and now the city is proposing to spend almost another $1.9 million on a new building. I'm, I'm trying to understand, is there a reasonable expectation from, from, from administration as to when these buildings will actually be utilized to their expected capacity or extent? Or are we just purchasing buildings to, to purchase buildings?
All right, well, the, the 55 Franklin Street that I discussed earlier, that will be, that'll be put into use in September of 2021 with the start of that school year. The middle school project, these are, are, you know, two of the facilities are existing middle schools. We're simply making them larger. Actually, Fairgrounds Middle is having some work done on the front entrance. There's not too, too much more work to the footprint itself, most of the work's being done internally. Penachuck, we're adding two new wings. And while we do that, that will be during the school year of 21, 22. So, students will be in the building, and we will have some portable classrooms for the areas that, that are necessary. And the new middle school will be replacing what is currently the Elm Street Middle School. And that project will be starting in the spring of 21. It'll be a two-year project, and the new students will therefore enter in September of 23. So, those three, the, the middle school project is significant, but it is, it's not necessarily increasing the amount of space, it's just updating. The Elm Street facility was originally built, most of it, in the 1930s. So, the, we did look at the cost either of renovating Elm versus building a new school, and it's actually cheaper to build a new school than it is to renovate Elm Street.
And thank you, Mr. Donovan, I, I appreciate that. I, I guess what I was going to, and, and I wasn't trying to make that more elaborate than it needed to be, it's just effectively, right now, occupancy is almost zero across the board. So, I, I just was trying to get some idea of, and if you know something, you know, that, that hasn't been made public, that you can't convey, I, I understand that. But as of right now, you know, and I, I have two of them in the school system, they, they haven't been in the school since last March. So, just with regard to sort of repopulating existing buildings that we have, I was just trying to get some understanding as to whether or not, if the city is going to pay almost $2 million for the space on Franklin Street, what was the reasonable timeframe for, for occupancy? And obviously, that would have to coincide with, with other factors, but is, is, you know, i- if, if all goes according to plan and things sort of return back to some state of normalcy, you know, what, what, what would be the first state of sort of full occupancy where, where you would think that, you know, you would have students in there, you know, whether it be the, the, the younger kids or, or the high school age kids, you know, transferring from the facility on Amber Street?
And that'll be September of 21. That building will be with the preschool and, and the high school students. And I hope we're back in school sooner rather than later. It's certainly not up to me to make that decision. But I hope students are back in the schools soon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Donovan, I appreciate it.
Other questions aboard? Okay, seeing none, does anybody want to make a motion regarding this item number two? Again, we'd be looking for some sort of recommendation, favorable or unfavorable for R-20-090.
Weber?
Mr. Weber?
Yes, I'd like to make a favorable motion for Resolution R-20-090, authorizing the purchase of the land and buildings at 55 Franklin Street.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Weber for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Aldermen for Resolution R-20-090. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Upstein.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Okay, thanks a lot.
I have, for Dan, just a minute, I just asked a request from, for Dan. When, when, on my question of the building department, would you get that information back to Linda or Christine? And just so I can get an email from them.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, that wraps up our agenda for, that's been proposed for this meeting. Does anyone have any discussion items?
Weber?
Mr. Weber?
Yes, a question for Christine. I got mine on Saturday, my packet, and last week, I didn't get it, you know, until very late, and it has, I, I feel it has nothing to do with the planning department. I have, I think it's all mail because of the mail situation that they're having problems. Is there any way that electronic PDF could be, like, in a PDF form that, if we have all of this, that it can be put on the email that you send out to us? That there's, that we get the PDFs, we can just delete it if we don't need them, but they're there, that we could download them temporarily and look at it on a, we could refer to it, click on it, minimize our screen that we see now, and then look at something and then come back, or make it smaller, a smaller window for each, that we could actually look at a electronic PDF for that. But we also, once we get it, we're all set, so it's available to us for, in case of this, so that Bob doesn't have to, or any of us, don't have to stay out of a real, get all the, you know, so we can have that for us.
I, I can put it in a PDF form, but the only problem is when we have big meetings, you might get quite a few different emails because I can't send it all one way, that way, you know, I can't send it, if it's too big, I can't send it all at one time. But if you don't get your packet by Monday or Tuesday of that week, I can always drop one off to you people, you know, to you guys, if that's more feasible, but I can try to put it on the, I can try to send you a PDF if that's what you guys want.
Well, what if we just, if we don't get it by Tuesday, we just request it, and then you can send us the email?
Yeah, I think Matt had some ideas going long-term here that we were gonna
Yeah, I mean, we
for next year, so.
Right, and, and Chris and I actually had a brief conversation about this on, on Friday of last week. We didn't anticipate issues with this packet based on the size, but what we can do if we have a larger packet is we can combine the PDFs and we can have a download link from either a Google Drive or Dropbox, something to that effect. So, we can, it can be done, and Bob, I apologize for you not getting your packet. We didn't know about that issue, but we can make sure that we provide a digital link to what we have.
No, thank you. Honestly, I think this was just a quirk this time. I, I've never had any issues. And, and again, I, I think I've, I've called out staff for their, their exemplary efforts in, in getting us our packets, up to and including some home deliveries, so. Yeah, whatever happened this week happened, i- it's just, I, I, I could have taken sort of an affirmative action. I, I think I lost track of the days this week, and honestly, when I realized I didn't have it today, I probably should have reached out, but it's, things, things happen. But thi- this was literally the first time I've ever had any sort of issue, but thank you, thank you for, 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 for speaking to that. I appreciate it.
I didn't get mine till yesterday, actually, which is very unusual for me.
I think it's mail.
It must be.
But I think Matt, like, we talked about earlier, maybe we come up with a, a planning proposal, a process, you know, whether it's a download link or something like that, and, you know, we can put it on, you know, shoot for the beginning of 2021 for sort of a new process, if you will.
Yeah, and that had, that had been our objective, but it sounds like we're having more issues. So, I think maybe we should give it a demo for that December meeting and try and get a link out to everybody and see how, see how it works.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Last, my last, last, the first meeting of November, I checked my postmark, and it was Friday. The postmark was Friday, and I didn't get it until Thursday, so.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with you guys.
Yeah.
I know my son works at the post office, and they're really backed up there, so.
Yeah. I'm sure.
Any other discussion items? Okay, hearing none, does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Weber, motion to adjourn.
All right, so we have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Weber. Can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson? Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch? And that motion passes.
All right, so we adjourned, 7:42.